So, good evening. It's now six o'clock and we'll start our council meeting. And everyone is present. We have one council member who is not present tonight, and that's Councilmember Schaefer. So, we just had closed session, and we have nothing to report out on those two items in the closed session. So, good evening, and thank you for reviewing the January 15th meeting of the Arcata City Council of the City of Arcata. And this is a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconferencing across with access and via Zoom. So, we'll have the land acknowledgement first. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known as, in the Wiat language, as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local and state and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the lands and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Tonight, we have the Scout Pack from Ninety-five and Troop Number Fifteen to post the colors and perform the flag salute. And the count, are you ready, Scouts? So, we will let you come, and we will get, raise ourselves up to pledge allegiance. So, you want to start, please?
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is that it? Thank you very much. The next item is disruptive behavior policy script. Before we proceed with tonight's meeting, I would like to address some recent concerns regarding behavior during public comment portion of our city council meetings. This city council deeply values the First Amendment right of our community members to express their views, and public participation is the cornerstone of our decision-making process, and we encourage open dialogue during our meetings. However, it's important to recognize that our meetings are structured to carry out the important work of governing the City of Arcata. In order to maintain order and ensure that we accomplish our business effectively, we must address any disruptive behavior that hinders the purpose of these proceedings. I want to make it clear that individuals engaging in disruptive behavior will first be given a warning, and if the behavior continues after the warning, the individual may be asked to leave the meeting. Disruptive behavior includes speaking beyond the allotted time, discussing matters that are not relevant to the agenda or outside the jurisdiction of the city council, making threats against members of the council or the public, and engaging in personal attacks, insults, or using slanderous language that disrupts the meeting. We ask all speakers to respect one another and to remember that these proceedings are focused on important work of local government. And maintain an orderly and respectful environment is essential for all of us to function effectively as a city council. And I thank you again for participating tonight. And I have a slight cold and a slight loss of a voice, but nevertheless, we would like to have a roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman?
Present.
Vice Mayor White?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. So, the first proclamation this evening is recognizing February two through eight, 2025, as scouting anniversary week, and Councilwoman Meredith Matthews will be reading that.
All right. So, whereas Chicago publisher William D. Boyce founded the Boy Scouts of America on February eighth, 1910, after learning of the scouting movement in London, and whereas just, in just two years, Boy Scouts were enrolled in every state, and in 1916, the United States Congress granted the Boy Scouts of America a federal charter. To date, there have been more than 126 million Scouts across America, over 2.43 million of which achieved the Eagle Scout Award, scouting highest rank. And whereas the purpose of the Scouting America program is to develop community members who are physically, mentally, and emotionally fit, have a high degree of self-reliance and resourcefulness, personal values, and the desire and skills to help others, and have a keen respect for the basic rights of all people. And whereas Scouts are taught the principle of the U.S. social, economic, and governmental systems, and are prepared to participate and provide leadership in American society through active civic engagement. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes the 115th anniversary of Scouting America, designates February second through eighth, 2025, as scouting anniversary week in Arcata, and expresses appreciation to the Scouts, their families, and the many volunteers of the Cub Scouts Pack, Scouts BSA troops, venturing crews, and Sea Scout ships of the Pacific Rivers District of Scouting America for their dedication to our local youth. Thanks to your efforts, hundreds of young boys and girls in Humboldt County are getting the support, friendship, and mentoring they need to lead successful and fulfilling lives through scouting. This is dated February fifth, 2025, signed by Mayor Alex Stillman. And who is picking this up?
Turn it over, turn over your folder, turn over your folder.
All right. Who's picking this up? It is one of our local Scouts.
Would you like to say a few words, please?
I would.
Thank you.
On behalf of Cub Scout Pack Ninety-five and Boy Scout Troop Fifteen, we would like to thank you for your continued support of scouting in Arcata.
Thank you very much. Our next proclamation is recognition of Black History Month, February 2025. And I came across this information, which I thought I would read before Councilman White reads the proclamation. During the summer of 1919, educator G. Woodson, the father of Black History Month, just had moved to Washington to serve as the new dean of the liberal arts, professor of history, and head of the graduate studies at Howard University. So, now, Councilman White, would you like to read the proclamation?
In recognition of Black History Month, February 2025. Whereas Black Liberation Month, also known as Black History Month and African-American Heritage Month, is a time to honor the rich cultural heritage, resilient spirit, and significant contributions of Black Americans to the history and progress of our nation. And whereas this month provides an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate the enduring legacy of survivors of slavery, whose strength and perseverance laid the foundation for the generations that followed, and whose stories remind us of the ongoing struggle for equality and justice. And whereas Black Americans have made immeasurable contributions to our society in the fields of art, science, education, business, civil rights, and beyond, shaping the fabric of our communities and the nation as a whole. And whereas it is imperative to recognize that the fight for equity and justice continues as Black Americans and people of African descent still face systemic racism and inequality in many areas of life, including education, healthcare, housing, and economic opportunities. And whereas we are called to support and uplift the organizations, individuals, communities dedicated to preserving and celebrating Black history and culture, and to creating a more inclusive and equitable future for all. And whereas the city council acknowledges and commends the work of local Black organizations and initiatives, including the Emoja Center for Pan of African Excellence, the NAACP, Humboldt County Black Music Arts, Be Black, Black to Our Roots, Youth Arts Will Succeed YAS, Black Humboldt, and the dozens of others, local, Black, and Brown-owned businesses that serve as cultural, economic, and social pillars in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of Arcata does hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black Liberation Month, Black History Month, and African-American Heritage Month, and encourages all residents to honor the contributions of Black Americans, reflect on the history of slavery and its lasting impact, and take action to combat systemic racism in our community, not just this February, but every day. The City Council of Arcata urges all residents to participate in and support local Black History Month events to amplify the voices of Black leaders and organizations, and to promote equity and inclusion in all areas of our society dated February fifth, 2025, by our very own Mayor Alexandra Stillman.
Thank you. You want to come forward?
All right. I will be presenting this then to Alexis Harrell, and I hope I don't mess your name up.
I did, but it's okay.
Could you pronounce it for us?
Alexis Harrell, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Do you want to have the rest of your group come up with you?
Yes, please.
Please come up. Thank you. We appreciate you all coming this evening. I know you came a little bit early, but we're happy that you still came back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Is this where I talk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you to the city council and the City of Arcata for this honor. I really appreciate it. I brought my student staff here with me because they are a huge part to what we do on campus. I would not be able to execute a lot, a lot of the things that we do as a center without their help, so please give them a hand as well. They contribute so much to our space, to our center, while balancing school, balancing jobs, balancing the matters of their personal lives, and their presence on campus as Black students, as Black individuals, is very important. Everything that you said in the proclamation is true and will continue to be true outside of any proclamation from institutions. We will never stop celebrating our contributions to the United States. We will never stop celebrating our resilience as a culture, as a people, so thank you for this honor. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for bringing everyone with you, and thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
So, the next item on our council agenda is council reports. Shall we start with Councilmember Matthews?
I would like to have a report by Commissioner.
Oh, you know, Bill, Bill is here. I'm so sorry, Bill. Anyway, I'm really happy that you're here from the Historic Landmarks Committee. Bill Rich is the chair, and he's going to give us an update on what they've done, and I'm sorry to have passed over you. But thank you so much for being here and driving back from your meeting in Ukiah today.
Thank you for having me. Councilmembers, I'm here to give you an update on the doings of the Historic Landmarks Committee over the last year. The committee is strengthened by its members. We're lucky to have Joe McDonald, Tim Keefe, Ron Perry, Jeanette Cooper on our committee. I think that they are very knowledgeable people in the matters of historic preservation, and it's what makes our committee, I think, very useful. We are very appreciative of our staff liaison, David, who guides us every other month, and I serve as the, as the chair of that committee. My name's Bill Rich. Over the last year, we've been meeting basically only every other month to accommodate everybody's schedules and the particular workload that is in front of us. We think that every other month is serving us well at this time, and we've been, we've been able to make our meeting times. Some of the particulars that we've been working on over this last year are wrapping up the Historic Context Statement for the City of Arcata. This is an important document that will be, if not already, for public viewing and digestion and reading. It's an important document to get right, and we've been taking quite a bit of care with all the language in there to make sure that we feel it represents the history of Arcata well. So, we've been spending quite a bit of time on the Historic Context Statement. I, I think we've, we've finally come to a close on that, and we're, we're rounding that one out, so I'm happy to report that. We've also taken on several specific projects that have come before the city, different, different applicants with historic preservation questions, and we encourage the city to continue to look to our committee for guidance on those kinds of matters. We think we can, we can provide that for, for you and for your staff to, to manage those kinds of questions. This, this coming, this next year, we can, we, we anticipate the good work that the committee's been doing with the local tribal communities and continuing that, that work. We look forward to maybe returning a little bit to May, that's History Month, Historic Preservation Month, and, and doing some more public outreach on the plaza, different kinds of, around town for our History Month in May. Last year, we didn't do that, but, but we've been doing that, and there's kind of renewed interest in bringing that forward. And we, any ideas that you may have on how to promote Arcata's history, we would love to hear that. And I think that basically wraps up some of the, the things that we've been up to this year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Bill. Council questions, please? No one? Wow. I served on that committee, and I know the committee is really a good committee, and I really appreciate the fact that you finished up the context statement. I think that's really a valuable thing for us. And just recent, I'm going to just mention something that came to me recently, but the Sealy and Titlow Building that's used as a workshop for many, it was brought to my attention. It's something we should maybe look at and see, the condition is not in the best shape, but it would definitely be a landmark, because how it serves Sealy and Titlow as the warehouse over the many years it was, Sealy and Titlow was operational where Hensel's Hardware is now, the paint store. They had their china, glassware, you know, housewares was in that, and then you would walk through the building, and you'd go back to the Sealy and Titlow where they sold the chickens and the savoury, you know, all the hay and so forth, which was in the building which they now use. But I understand it's in need of repair, so I just thought I'd put that before you, so thank you.
Well, we'd be, our committee would be happy to investigate that further and to promote Arcata's history. We think it provides a sense of pride, and, 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 so, so that's a great suggestion, and be happy to look into that particular building, and, and I think that's the value of our committee and, and those kinds of, those kinds of matters.
Well, thank you so much for coming this evening. I appreciate it.
Well, it's an honor to present this.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about what's going to happen in May, so I'll keep my ears and eyes peeled, and if I can think of anything to bring to the table, I'll get ahold of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you again for coming this evening.
My pleasure.
So, we'll go on to council and staff reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Matthews.
Sure. I don't have many report hours. It was kind of a slow couple of weeks. I did want to let people know that I had the opportunity to meet with some leadership at Mad River Hospital and get some updates on their plans to bring more physicians up here and enhance their services, so that was really wonderful to hear. I also want to express my sorrow for the casualties of that fire, and remind everybody that it's really cold out. Please be careful with your space heaters and candles, and take care of each other. Thanks.
Thank you. Shall we, we'll go to Councilmember Stacy Atkinson Salazar.
It's a lot, I know.
I know. I'm used to saying your first names, so I'm trying to use last names now.
It's okay. Let's see, so for HCOG, what's the, I think the main thing is we're looking for a new executive director, and we actually have interviews on Friday, first round of interviews, and a lot of qualified applicants, so that's very exciting. Humboldt County Association of Government, so that's where all of our road funding comes through. And, um, yeah, I'm not going to go into federal funding right now. So anyways, that's where that comes from, and so it's an important position, and this is an important time, so it's, it's important that we get the right person in that seat. So, looking forward to getting that filled. And then I was also invited to serve on, it's, it's an advisory community, a community advisory committee for the Humboldt Bay Offshore Wind Heavy Lift Marine Terminal Project. So, there are lots of advisory groups for this project because it's a big project, and so I'm on a general one, and I was selected to kind of represent or just be available to the community and surrounding areas of Arcata at large. So, we only have had one meeting. I'm just trying to kind of figure out the nuts and bolts of the advisory committee, but basically the, my job is to stay informed of what's happening on the project, and then if community members want to reach out to me, I mean, of course, there's lots of people to reach out to, but maybe people know me or are more comfortable and might like to do that, so then I can help answer questions or most likely direct people to where they might go. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. That's a really big project for our community that will be happening, and, you know, there's a lot of concerns as well as the excitement about it, so I'm happy to be a part of that.
Thank you, and it's a long-range project, too. It'll be years before we see anything out there. So, Councilmember White?
Yeah, thank you, Meredith, for keeping us abreast of what's happening over at Mad River Hospital, and congratulations, Stacy, on that committee. Let's see. First, I want to say I may have to leave, well, I will have to leave at eight for a necessary family obligation, but I think we'll be done before then. The Redwood Region Economic Development Committee was canceled, so I'll have to wait till next month to tell you what's going on there. I did get an opportunity to attend a healthcare in Humboldt put on by the Board of Supervisor Natalie Arroyo. There was a large panel of healthcare providers, and of course, Mad River Hospital was one of those providers, all the way over to southern Humboldt. There were, every clinic and hospital facility was represented, and hopefully this conversation will be many, one of many. It was pretty informative. You know, we all know that there are, we have a lot of need in Humboldt for medical care, behavioral health care, so I'm thrilled that Natalie put this together and, and brought us all together to start having that conversation. I also had an opportunity to attend Fuentes Nueva, Safe School Traffic with Dan Burden, and Councilmember Stacy Atkins Salazar spoke, and a lot of great ideas came from this session. I think what was most striking for me, there was this young person, I'm not sure how old he was, maybe under 12, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a small person, a young person, who kind of led the charge of the group, and then was the group presenter as well, and presented some really great ideas to improve safety for youth walking to school. I also got to attend my second Equity Arcata meeting. I'm super excited about what's going to be coming in 2025. And then also tomorrow is the monthly chamber mixer at the Jacobi Storehouse at 5:30. Sounds like there's going to be a lot of fun there. And then just some quick updates. Kuna had a great turnout at their monthly bilingual what's cooking class, which was taught by guest chef Pete Ciati, former owner of Big Pete's, New York-style pizzeria, and also the Jambalaya. There was a great turnout at the weekly bilingual ballet terapia. It's a yoga slash dance therapy class. It's free to everyone, as all of their events are, and it was taught by Dr. Jorge Matias and Heidi Hopkins, both of Providence Healthcare. The Pickle Bowl Court is very popular. Kuna has invested in a racket lending library, and I am so excited, I'm smiling ear to ear, because water is being installed at the Valley West Park on Howland Drive. So, we have five incredible fruit trees that the city planted there as part of the participatory budget process, so water is there, so we no longer have to slog water in a wheelbarrow. And let's see, oh, and the dog park. It looks like it is finally starting to break ground. Super excited about that. And then finally, the City of Arcata held the Valley West Community Center Visioning Sessions at the Kuna Resilience Hub, and, yeah, there was a good turnout, and I don't know if I can do this or not, but a constituent asked if I could read a letter, and I guess it did come to all of council staff and was asked for public. Is that something that I can read?
Well, why don't we do that under oral communications?
Okay. They were unable to be present, so that's why. Okay, perfect.
I think we should do it later.
Yep, that's all I got.
That would be appropriate. Okay, thank you. And so, we've had, I'm going to hold this book up, The Marsh Builders. So, Sharon Levy was a member of the Friends of the Arcata Marsh, and one of the things she took on was the story of how the whole Arcata Marsh system came about. And she was a writer and in her previous life. So, she was a lifelong member of FOM, and she was also one of the history people. She was a marsh trails naturalist, roving around, answering questions, because that's a new program that they've been able to put together. And I just thought she just recently passed, and that we should acknowledge what she's done for us, because if someone hadn't written this book, we may never have had the history of how the marsh came about, and it all started in the 70s. So, I would like to say at the end of the meeting, we'll close the meeting in memory of Sharon Levy. So, I just wanted to bring that forward. And as always, I wanted to mention how wonderful the Parks and Recreation Department is and their guide that's out, and how many activities. I think you probably mentioned a couple of things that are in there, and I hope everyone grabs it, because there's something for all ages. And that's all I have to report. Are there any staff reports this evening?
So, I just wanted to take a moment, sorry, get organized here, and provide just a little bit of update on the billboard that is on Highway 101 going south, if you get on from Samoa Boulevard. We've had a number of community members reach out with concerns, and I do want to just kind of put forward how the city's looked at it and, and our position on it, which is we certainly understand the concern people have for protecting our community and, and people's feelings, but there are no grounds for the city to take action on the billboard or to remove it or penalize it. We have gone through the city's municipal code, and we've also considered other First Amendment protections. It is on private property. It's not city property. The billboard itself is also private property, and it is allowable structure at that location according to our use code, and it does not violate any, violate any city land code regarding signs or prohibited signs. And so, what we've, we directed folks who want to sort of reach out and make a comment about it is to take action by reaching out to Outfront Media. They've got a website. If you just Google it, you can find the information. They are the billboard owners, and I wanted to kind of ask people to respect the First Amendment protected speech right. I know it's not, it's not comfortable at all times. It can be controversial. It can be unpopular, but it is a pretty broad right, and we as a local government, like all other governments in this country, do sort of have to provide those protections of freedom of speech, and I just appreciate everybody understanding those, those issues and, and working with us.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? That's it. Thank you very much. We'll go on then to oral communications. The council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council and matters not on the agenda. This early session of the public comment is limited to 15 minutes total. Each speaker has two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of time for your public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under Item 13, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There will be also a time to provide public comments specific to each item when that item is being reviewed by the council. Please make your way to the stadium, the podium if you wish to speak, and I don't know if anyone does, but thank you. Yeah, I say that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pat. I'm a nurse. I'm a member of Jewish Voices for Peace, Veterans for Peace, Healthcare for All. And the reason why I'm saying all that is because I want to say I'm a peaceful protester, and I feel that we who are trying to get a sister city in Gaza are doing so for humanitarian and medical aid. We, we are not like Zionists who are proud to say that they are Zionists. They are proud that they kill, bomb, starve, and torture people. They assassinate babies with a bullet to the head with a brain seeping out. You're proud of that? Well, that's like saying I'm proud to be a Nazi. I just, I just want to say I am for peace. I'm for peace and humanitarian and medical aid, and so, so are the people who want a sister city in Gaza, and I would ask you to please remember that, that we're very peaceful, and that's what we want, and that's the important thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll take a picture. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I- I am very happy to be able to address you guys today. And the reason that I'm here is because I just want to give an update that we're continuing a petition to demonstrate that there is broad-based support in the local community for an Arcata sister city in Palestine. And we have some upcoming events. We have 27th of February at the Arcata, I'm sorry, the Eureka Labor Temple. We will have the head chair of the Boulder Navlus Sister City addressing our community. And we'll have time for a community dialogue afterwards. So we hope that you guys can make that and check that out and maybe find out more about what an Arcata sister city would look like. Also, we've just confirmed Dr. Sui Ang, the co-founder of Medical Aid for Palestinians, one of the leading suppliers of medical aid in Gaza, is going to also address us by video link in our community, and there'll be time for discussion with that as well. We'll give you the updates on that. That's later in March. And about the billboard, I mean, this is something that I think a lot of people care about, because it's very provocative. I think it's meant to be provocative. And the reason why it is provocative is because it's basically declaring that we should, people should be proud of the slaughter of tens of thousands of women and children. That's why it's provocative. That is, that is an outrage, and it should be an outrage to many people. Obviously, we don't have the money for a billboard. You know, they're better funded than us. Okay, great. But we represent the larger, larger section of the community. We're the masses. They have the money. Why do they have the money? Because they are siding with the building of empire. That's what it's about.
So thank you very much.
Stealing people's land.
Thank you. Next person, please. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. My name's Blaze Bon Payne. I'm a former lecturer in political science at both College of the Redwoods and Cal Poly Humboldt. And I teach history in the public schools, including now at Hoopa Elementary, 7th and 8th grade. I too am in support of the Sister City Project between Arcata and Palestine. I think, as Howard Zinn reminds us, you can't be neutral on a moving train. And this city council should not attempt to be neutral. And it certainly should not attempt any complacency with genocide. So let's not be complacent with genocide. If we don't oppose genocide, we're complacent with genocide. I think that is a logical fact. So the only question then is, is, is this genocide taking place against Gaza? And the answer to that is one for political scientists. And I would ask you, is there, is there an international organization that has the credibility of the International Criminal Court, the UN, Amnesty International, and Human Rights Watch, just to name a few, who don't agree with those organizations that this is genocide? And if you can't answer that, then please support stopping the genocide and supporting the Sister City Project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak tonight? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, I have two hands on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, please go ahead.
Hi, uh, yeah, hi, I'm Dan Shaheen. And I guess I don't have a camera. That's fine. I just wanted to come out and-
Hi, Dan, I think you've unmuted yourself, but we can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Oh, wait, wait, no, wait, now you can hear me. Now you can hear me. No, you can't hear me.
Uh, Dan, just one moment, we're having a technical difficulty.
Okay.
Just a moment, please, for the Zoom.
Okay.
Dan, can you try speaking again?
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. I just wanted to come out and add my voice to the voices in support of Palestine Sister City Project, especially with the news coming out. Even just today, the tragedy in Gaza is ongoing. Donald Trump is the worst thing to happen to Palestinians since Joe Biden, and things are not going to get any better. Right here in our own community, we're seeing racism on full display. Now, I'm a free speech supporter, and I support the right of anybody to put anything they want on a billboard. But I know for a fact that if someone were to put a billboard up that said, "From the river to the sea, Palestine shall be free," that would immediately, immediately be taken down and accused of anti-Semitism. There's a clear double standard here in this county, where the Israeli flag flies in our county courthouse in a window, and is for over a year, where, where people come to city council meetings and call activists like the Redwood Peace and Justice Center terrorists, and call all Palestinians like myself and my children terrorists, simply because we want to speak about our homeland. Please, 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 consider putting your support behind Sister City Project, once the plans have materialized and we can give you a concrete plan for how to do it in a safe and effective way. I really respect this council and their ability to think rationally about these things and change their mind when presented with the correct set of facts. And I know that you can make the right decision here. We've got a serious racism problem right here in the county staring us in the face in the form of billboards and flags in the county courthouse. We have a problem with supremacists who are openly flouting fascist slogans and logos in favor of extermination of Palestinian people, and it has to stop.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your comment. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Uh, yes, Jeffrey, please go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I wanted to kind of address an elephant in the room, which is that I'm realizing that one of the things happening here with this particular debate regarding Israel and Palestine is that there are actually a lot of people who are legitimately frightened by the notion of an arms embargo to Israel. And I can appreciate that, because I see that over the course of the last 75 years, this conflict, this conflict has been escalating, and there's a lot of bad feelings. And there's now a notion that in order for the state of Israel to exist, it really has to expel every last Palestinian, otherwise there's going to be a Hamas attack. Now, I can appreciate that point of view, given that 1,300 people were killed October 27, 15 months ago or so. And I would encourage people not to think of it as something that happened in a vacuum, because there were, in fact, events leading up to it that exacerbated the hostilities. And it wasn't only just on the part of Palestinians. And I also want to emphasize that I feel that if indeed Israel gets the green light to go ahead and eradicate all Palestinians, or send them all to Jordan, or eradicate half of them and enslave the other half-
Jeffrey, thank you very much for your comment. Your time is over. I appreciate you calling in. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
I do have two more hands raised.
Two more hands, thank you.
Rayner, please go ahead.
I'm here to also call for Arcata to adopt the Sister City Resolution on Gaza City. Creating Sister City initiatives is something that other American cities have done. As was discussed earlier, Boulder, Colorado, has become a sister city to the Palestinian city of Nablus. The same thing could be done here. The Sister City idea has been discussed many times here in recent months, and so far, it hasn't been put into practice. We'll see if it is. Regardless, it is worth continuing to discuss, if at the least, for the sake of rallying the people of this area around the Palestinian cause. I really think that it's important for the people of this community to show that we do not consent to our government's escalating efforts at exterminating an entire group of people. And that's the thought that I want to leave everybody with. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Shannon, please go ahead.
Hi there, I'm here calling in support of the Sister City with Gaza City. After 15 months of pure, unadulterated, American-funded genocide, I am traumatized, and I probably will be traumatized the rest of my life by what my tax dollars are funding. And the least that we can do for folks who care about human rights and women's rights and progressive movements, and I thought that's what people in Arcata cared about, is to sign on board with recognizing Gaza City and a sister, sister partner relationship with them, so we can share resources and culture. There's a ceasefire right now. They finally have stopped the slaughter, and this is the perfect time to do this. Our president has just declared that he wants to ethnically cleanse Gaza and build some, you know, Mediterranean estates there. And we should be standing up against those statements. You guys read a land acknowledgement before you start these procedures, and this is 110% related to your land acknowledgement, to fight colonialism and imperialism and the dispossession of native peoples from their land. Please, please listen to your constituents and support this very just cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. Councilmember White, would you like to read the letter into the record, please?
Yes, I'm reading this from Johnny Mig, Valley West resident. He did send this letter in to council staff and for the public, but was unable to be on Zoom or in person. So it's titled Punching Up, Punching Down. During the Valley West Visioning Center last week, community members discussed their values and wishes with regards to a community center in Valley West. I'm deeply disturbed to hear about how much concept of a community center was opted by those wishing to add even more homeless services to Valley West and the community center and turn the community center into a resource center instead. Repeated discussion of public showers, for example, solely counted creating a community center for all of those already residing in Valley West. We need to remember to punch up when trying to solve the problem of poverty, drug abuse, mental illness, domestic abuse, and other unfairness that is happening to the unhoused. If we allow ourselves to punch down instead, we set the stage for creating even more unfairness and houseless, for unhoused list individuals. Punching down is enabling vagrancy to the point of compromised individuals are not motivated to better their circumstances. Two, drawing people from all over the congregate into a non-therapeutic milieu that only reinforces failure. Three, foisting the consequences of said congregation, congregation into the backs of the working-class neighborhood that are already have plenty problems of their own. Scenario, Cal Poly Humboldt has an extraordinary curriculum training students for professions working with the natural world. How wonderful would it be to see some of the youngsters now growing up in Valley West to take advantage of their hyper-local opportunity, appreciation of the natural world, when you were one of those with the core values that came up again and again in the Community Center Visioning Center? Here instead, a youngster never has a chance to build that core value, because the natural world around them is not attractive, much less inspiring or even safe, because the homeless encampments have been encouraged to locate to Valley West to take advantage of services offered here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So on the consent calendar, all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A, approval to a waive reading of texts and consent to read by title only an ordinance on this agenda. Anyway, approve the minutes of January 15, 2025, special city council meeting. Approve the minutes of January 15, 2025, city council meeting. D is bi-weekly report on disbursements. E is adopt ordinance number 1574, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code to adjust council salaries. Title II, administration, chapter one, council, section 20, 2010, salaries of the city council members. F, adopt ordinance number 1576, an ordinance of the city of the, of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to purchasing procedures. Title II, administration, chapter four, physical administration. Number G is approve of ground lease and memoriam of understanding between the Redwood Coast Energy Authority for electric vehicle supply equipment at Carlson Park, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And H is approve council member Atkinson Salazar's remote participation at March 5, 2025, city council meeting pursuant to AB 2449, so that she can represent the city of the California Association of Councils of Governments Leadership Forum. Would any council member or staff like to remove an item from the agenda? Hearing none. Do any members- I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Okay, we have a motion on the floor? Well, we have one. Did anyone want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. So do we have anyone from the public that wants to comment on any consent calendar items? If so, please line up at the podium and raise your hand on Zoom. Thank you. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm still getting used to this consent calendar.
I'm gonna give you more time.
What's that?
I'm gonna give you more time.
Okay, I have three minutes to talk about this. So A, waiving the reading of the text and contents, consent to read by title only ordinances on this agenda. I hope that means just this agenda sometimes. So that goes to item E, which is the adjustment of council member salaries. And I also am concerned about the Redwood Coast Energy Authority's electric vehicle supply equipment at Carlson Park. And I also want to comment on council members' participation remotely or their absenteeism. So I guess I want to say I had to leave the meeting early last January 15, and I wasn't present for the discussion on salaries. There were only three council members available on the dais that day. Alex Stillman and Stacy Atkins Salazar were absent from that discussion. I would have preferred that they had postponed that discussion until everyone was present on the dais to talk about your own salaries. Just a comment from the public, I think it would have been a more just discussion if everyone had been present. So I just wanted to say that. I think that this energy, RCEA, electric vehicle supply equipment, I hope with Carlson Park being a very sunny place, one of the sunnier places where we could have, I guess it's an electric plug-in that's being planned there, we talk about putting solar over it so that we can start utilizing the sun instead of plugging into the grid for people energizing their electric vehicles. I think this is time, we really need to really push forward in thinking about our energy future. And I hope that part of this will be a solar energy, maybe battery storage component to any type of charging station, if that's what this matter is about. And then I really appreciate knowing- And then I really appreciate knowing that Stacy Atkinson-Salazar will be somewhere else and wants to continue participating, which is great. I really would have loved at the last meeting to know Mayor Stillman that you weren't going to be there. I was surprised when I didn't find you there. So if you're not going to be there, it would be really nice for the constituents to know. So when we come to the meeting, we're prepared to know that you aren't going to be available at the meeting. I don't know if emergency came up for some of you who haven't been at other meetings and council member Schaefer today. I also would like for people to recognize, because some people are watching this for the first time, and that Tabitha Miller is filling in for our city manager who's at a meeting apparently out of town for the city, but kind of announcing that kind of stuff.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I lived in Arcata 11 years. I think Trump and Vance could have a good homeless army, and yielding crops isn't out of the question.
So, sir, this is actually related to the items on the consent calendar?
I've been listening, yeah.
So we have to, you have to be addressing something on the consent calendar. If you want to speak on during oral communications, it'll be coming up shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. So we have a motion on the floor. I believe it's by Councilmember Matthews and seconded by Councilmember White. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. So we'll go on to the next portion of our agenda, which is under new business. We'll receive an update on the financial status of the water fund and the steel water line replacement project, and direct staff is appropriate. May we have a staff report from the finance director, please?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, vice mayor, city council members. Really quickly, we're going to talk about, we're going to start with the steel water line replacement project because that really is at the heart of our financial discussions this evening. We'll talk about the status of the water fund, the financial challenges the utilities facing. We'll talk about the recommended short-term plan and the need for a longer-term plan. Just to begin with, the steel water line replacement project is part, it's the first phase of a bigger project. So much of the city's water infrastructure is 50 to 100 years old. 50 years is sort of the max on a useful life, so some of that has well exceeded as long as it should be around. And what we're experiencing and have been experiencing for quite a while is frequent line breaks and system failures. In the last three years, we had 244 reports that related to water leaks. The good news is that many of those were insignificant or nonexistent or very easy to fix, but at least five or 10 times a year, we have significant events, and these require an extraordinary amount of staff time. Many times, they happen in the middle of the night, on holidays, weekends, and multiple staff have to come out. In addition to that, the resources, because we're digging up lines, we're replacing on the fly, we're calling additional companies out with additional equipment, and then we should recognize the financial impact to our local businesses. We had one experience just this last December 1, which was the end of the holiday weekend after Thanksgiving, where we shut down many businesses on the plaza that day because the water was out and they could not operate. And so that impacts, certainly impacts them, but we have to remember that also impacts the city's revenues too. So it is important. Just this specific project, it is currently out to bid. It's replacing 33,600 approximately linear feet of aging steel water mains. We've got 300 new valves, 680 laterals, and 700 meter boxes involved in this project. This is not a new project. I went back, I didn't do a thorough search, but I went back and looked at several rate studies in the last 20 years. It was included in the 2005 rate study. It had a cost of $1 million. In 2020, which is the most recent rate study we've gone through, it was at a cost of $5 million, and it was budgeted with a grant offset of $2.5 million, so we expected a $2.5 million net cost. We recently received an engineer's estimate, and the price tag now is $14.5 million, and we do not have a grant offset, which is really where we're at. I wanted to just show really quickly, because pictures are cool, although these are not necessarily, it really kind of gives you a sense of what happens when we have one of these breaks, the amount of water that is released and leaked. This is the intersection of Fourth and F Street. We've got the intersection of Zedner and S Streets and 10th and I Streets. You can see the large hole that had to be dug into our street there. We've got Sewer Street, and again, it's dark out, it's at night. Intersection of G and 9th Street, you can see how far down they have to dig to get to the pipe to actually fix it. And then this is also a cracked pipe, pipe from Plunkett Road. So one of the other factors that I think we should consider when we have these kind of leaks is how much we're losing. And this is just a history of the last seven years of water supplied, which is the large blue number, the water used, which is the water that we actually are consuming, it's the water that's running through meters that we are accounting for and collecting revenue on, and then the lost water. And you can certainly see, if you look across, that the blue line there is trending the water loss, and we are certainly since 2022 on an uphill course, and we are just below 30% water loss as of our current year that ended on, excuse me, June 30 of 2024. To put that in perspective, the American Water Association recommends that those amounts in the U.S. stay between about 10 and 15%. So this is pretty significant, and it does have impacts on our revenues. It's the cost of the water, which we are lucky. We don't see a huge increase because we're mostly billed on the cost to actually treat the water and get it to us, not on a volume charge from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. The other problem we have is that the city system is old, but so is the private part, aspect of our water system. So we also are dealing with substantial leaks on the private side, and RAL, we don't have to pay to improve those, and they're not our responsibility. We do have a leak policy that we do forgive up to two months water loss when they have a water leak. And those, we are actually, this last year, we probably lost about $100,000 in water that we could not bill because it was associated with a pretty substantial leak. I'm going to move on to kind of talk about the impact on the water fund resources. So as a general rule, and this is true of utilities normally, over the years, what you do is you accumulate funds, you charge rates, you accumulate that money, and it sits in your reserves until you need to replace infrastructure or have big capital improvements, and obviously the steel water line is one of those. And you set your rates to include those capital projects. So you build up enough, you do the projects, and you move forward. We simply cannot afford the new price tag. It's that simple. In addition to that, I think it's important to talk about the fact that this is not the only CIP project that we need to address in the next 10 years. This is phase one of large replacement of our water lines. We probably have at least 10 years where we need to be spending, according to our city engineer, $3 to $5 million a year on infrastructure. And well, we thought we had healthy reserves when we looked at this probably a year ago, where we were at $12.4 million available there. That's not enough to cover the cost of this project, and we have some additional issues that we'll talk about in a few slides, but to kind of explain the numbers that are there, this is the bottom of those long-range plans that were attached to the agenda, and this is really a summary of your resources. So the top line, the increase, decrease in working capital is the net of all your revenues less all your expenses, and it does include capital projects. The $2.2 million last year and even the $2.6 million loss or deficit from those two years was planned for. You know, those were spending down, those reserves that we built up so that we could do some capital projects, and we have succeeded there. The estimated beginning available fund balance, the 12.4 was at the beginning of fiscal year 2024. At the end, we had $10.2 million. You'll see that on the next line, it becomes the beginning balance for 2025. The challenge, and if you just look over to the end of 2028, if we continue forward without looking at a rate structure, without addressing the deficit, and we do the project with the $14.5 million price tag, we will be $7.5 million in the hole. So obviously, we have to do something. I want to talk a little bit more about the numbers, and I realize there's lots of numbers on this, but really the trend lines are what I wanted to point out here. And if you start at the top, you'll see there's a blue line. That is your operating revenue currently, and the problem with that is that there's a couple of things at work there. There are no rate increases in the future. We implemented the last one as of July 1 of 2024, and so that's one of the things that we're dealing with. You'll also have a decrease in revenue because as your cash balances decrease rapidly, we won't have interest revenue coming in. We're also, again, we've also seen that decrease from leaks and other things, and this model assumes that we have that same level of leaks at least for a little while. So that's kind of the unfortunate. At the same time, of course, the orange line, which is our expenses, is increasing with inflation, and we have, you know, as you can see, if we do nothing, we have a big gap when we get out to 2034. The bottom line, the green line, is actually a cumulative. It's every year that gap, which obviously grows bigger every year. And my little bubble here, which when I looked at the name, when I added it to my graph, it was actually the explosion, and I thought that was kind of apropos. And so we end up at a net of negative $12.5 million, which is exactly that 12.4 we had. We've just wiped out our reserves, and that's just the operating. This does not include the capital improvement program, which you can see that I have bigger explosions. So the first line, the blue line there, is just the operating deficit across time, and again, that's a negative 12.5. If you take your capital improvement program, which is the orange line, this happens to be the net revenue and expenses. So when we get grants in, that will offset some of the costs. Unfortunately, we don't have any of those in play going forward. It doesn't mean we won't get them, but we currently don't have anything that's been awarded that we can count on. That puts us at a negative $32.6 million. And again, this is if we do nothing and we just continue to spend money. And then you add those two together and you get a negative $45.1 million. The clear, you know, point here is that we simply can't not do this. We don't have those funds and other funds. We don't have those resources and other funds to cover $45 million. So we are proposing two sort of approaches for the council to consider tonight. The first is really the short-term solution, and I think it's imperative that we move forward with the steel water line replacement project. It's costing us money, and the chances of us having a bigger or larger break or failure is adds every year that we put that off. So we continue forward with the bid process, and the only thing that we would reevaluate is if the bids come in at a much higher amount than we've got as the engineer's estimate. The second thing that we would recommend, and we are already in the process of putting this together for council approval, most likely at the February 19 meeting, is hiring a rate consulting firm. And they would be looking at, obviously, the focus is on the water rates, but at the same time, we figured we'd look at the wastewater rate so that we're doing a comprehensive review of the utilities, we'll look at capacity charges, and we also want to take a look at the cost allocation plan, which is how all of the overhead and indirect charges are charged out to our utilities. We want to make sure that those amounts are correct and valid and that we can justify those fees, or if they need to be adjusted, we can do that. In order for us to move forward with this project and to not end up with that big explosion kaboom, we are recommending that the council first approve an inter-fund loan policy. And the reason for that, this, is that this is one of those things that if we don't follow policy and we aren't upfront and we don't, we aren't very transparent about how we do that process, it can get us in trouble with the auditors. And there's just some things that we need to keep in mind, and one of them that's really important is we want the council to approve any loans. We want it to be in a public meeting, we want it to be a resolution, we want all the terms of the loan, including a very, you know, set payment schedule set forth ahead of time. And one of the requirements when we make, when you all approve it, but when we recommend that decision to you, is that the fund, the fund that is receiving the funds must have the ability to pay it back. And that goes back to why we really need to get that rate consultant in place and get those plans so that we have a solid repayment plan to go forward. And then, of course, council approve an $8.5 million loan from the wastewater fund to the water fund. And I want to mention here, and we included in your packet, the long-range plan for the wastewater project. We have benefited, we obviously were very successful with grants on your Phase One water wastewater plant redesign and rebuild, and so we have built up reserves, and those are not necessarily reserves. That $8.5 million is not immediately in need over the next 10 years, so it is something that that fund can provide. The other thing that I would mention is that we're also trying to manage these bills. Most people get a bill from the city, and it's for water and wastewater, but they don't pay attention to the difference. They pay attention to how much they owe, and so if we can manage those two together, we might be able to keep those rate, those potential rate increases down and just make it a little bit easier on our customers, too. So this is sort of the short-term plan in place. And I will tell you that because there has to be rate increases, I have plugged in rate increases into this plan. They have not gone through a rate study, they are, you know, simply me trying to make the numbers balance, and you have not approved them. So, you know, anybody out there, these are not rate increases that are in play yet, they're simply a plan. You can see, we wouldn't do anything with rates until the year 2026. This does have an average increase per year of 6% all the way out to 2034, and again, that would be about 49% of somebody's water wastewater utility bill that they would receive from us. Our expenses are the same as they were on the last one, and the big difference, and this is just operating, it doesn't include the capital improvement program, we're actually able to save or put aside and accumulate about $12.3 million. So instead of pulling money out, we actually would be able to add towards our capital projects. This is the capital improvement program piece of this. We've got, just like the other chart, we've got the operating piece with the $12.3 million. I don't have any explosions here, we have little call-out boxes instead. If you look at the cost of the capital program, which includes the offset of the loan, you've got, let me make sure I've got my number correct, you've got your networking capital where you're just eating into it by $10.4 million, and just to be clear, you had 12, you had 12.4, you're using 10.4, that leaves you just 2 million. So when I say better but not good, 2 million in reserves is not a lot for your wastewater utility, and this is where we really need to look at those longer-term plans, and we really need to figure out how best to fund the, you know, the ongoing $3 to $5 million that we really need to be doing. And it may be we look at a bigger capital program where we finance amounts upfront. I just looked at what rates would be, they probably would be about 4.5% if we borrowed the money. That's also about what we're earning right now. Obviously, going forward, rates will probably do all kinds of crazy things over that period of time, but it may allow us to do those on a different scale, get the work done, and it will also help us firm up our revenues and our water losses and some of the other things that are eating away a little bit by little bit over our resources. So this is probably the least popular thing we could bring up, which is talking about, you know, utility rate increases. As I said, my projections were an average of 6%. I don't know that that's the right number, but it's what I could put in and make it work. You would be splitting this, your water bill, the average residential customer, their water bill is about 49% of their total bill, the wastewater is 51. At this point in time, we're not seeing that we need wastewater rate increases, at least in the near future. So there would be, you know, it would be, if it's 6% split over the two- So there would be, you know, it would be, if it's 6% split over the two, it would be less than, you know, 3% per year on average. And again, the level of the CIP, that really is the driving factor, just like that Steel Water Line Replacement Project is driving our current financial issues. That additional money that we need to figure out how to invest in our city infrastructure is going to be the biggest drive on rates. And it is critical, the water loss. We also have, you know, we also, because our water meters are aging, we feel like we're probably, they're probably not, part of the reason we have the water loss is that they are not properly measuring the amount of water that's going through them. So a couple of things that happen. Typically, when water meters fail, they slow down, and so customers start getting the benefit of being charged less water. And we do know we have meters out there that are not registering water use at all. So that's also a critical piece of our infrastructure. And then, of course, just losses on businesses. We don't want to put them in that position ourselves. And with that, I'm happy to entertain questions, and I just put the staff's recommendation up here, which is to direct staff to draft an interfund loan policy and then a resolution providing terms for an $8.5 million loan from the city's wastewater fund to the city's water fund for possible future action.
Thank you. Council questions, please?
So I guess first I want to say, I'm really appreciative of that you are on this, and I realize these shortfalls began long before you were on board. I'm new, so this is like kind of shocking to me, and I know that we need to address this. In the introduction, it says that this project has been in the city's capital improvement project since 2005. So while the pipes were not 100 years old back then, many were 75 years old, and I'm not trying to be adversarial, but I'm just wanting to, I think I'm merely asking the questions that the constituents would be asking and trying to understand then why in 2020, when Bartle Wells, I hope I'm saying that right, when they conducted their rate study and we increased water rates, why did we not see this shortfall? I know that over the last three years, you mentioned in your report or presentation that there were 244 reports of water leaks or water repairs. And again, I realize that you were not even here back in 2020, but I'm assuming that we had those same similar issues in 2020 when we did the recent study with Bartle Wells. And if you look at the water loss, we lost more water in 2020 than any of the years except for 2024. So I'm just wondering why this didn't come up again in 2020? And then also, just worth mentioning, the similar losses were experienced in 2018. And I also want to say, I understand that we don't currently have an interfund loan policy and that prior to approving these loans, that we do need to do this, best practices and also within the state law. But why would we use Bartle Wells again for this new rate study if they were remiss in bringing this up, this very important information more than four years ago? And then, well, and I'll stop.
Okay.
Sorry, that was a lot. I have a couple more, but I'll stop.
I'm going to start, and I probably, the city engineer will probably help chime in on some of the historical issues as far as the, so we went with Bartle James because actually what I can tell you is I went back through their rate study when I started looking at these numbers, trying to figure out what we had planned for and what we hadn't. They planned for the water line replacement project. They used our numbers. But what I can tell you is that they were pretty much right on as far as the revenue, expenses, and the projections. And those numbers really came out, and it really came down to the difference between a $5 million project and a $14.5 million project. And in many ways, if you think about it, we might not have had the absolute correct number back in 1920 when we plugged in that $5 million, but we've had a lot of things happen over the last five years. We had a pandemic. We've had, you know, record, you know, record inflation, and we've seen higher inflation on all of our capital projects and all of our construction materials than anywhere else. And that's been a trend since even before the pandemic. So we feel pretty confident that they are on top of it, and that some of this is that maybe we didn't have the actual right number then, but we do feel like the rest of the work they've done is strong. They have gone through our numbers. That's another reason we looked at them was because we want to move this forward sooner rather than later, because one of the other key things that we didn't touch on here is that borrowing money, we don't really have the ability to borrow money from the outside world right now because we don't have any capacity to pay the money back, you know, because that line is going negative on our operating revenue. And so we're challenged there, which is part of the reason for the interfund loan. And I know that, and I will mention this before I turn it over to the city engineer, you know, we've talked about the fact that you all got record amounts of grant revenue, in particular for the wastewater treatment plant in the last five years. And part of this is just a managing of resources and having enough resources to get that money spent, to make sure that we can meet the grant requirements and trying to prioritize where we get the biggest bang for our buck and making sure that we max out the larger dollars. And so some of it is just capacity, and I will let Nitra add to that.
So Nitra, would you just mention, too, how many miles do we happen to have of water lines? Thank you.
I will. Good evening. We have 89 miles of water lines. That varies from 2-inch to 12-inch water line, and we have maybe potentially five to six different types of pipe, includes HDP, PVC, C900, steel line. So maybe I'll try to answer your question. So this project has been in the books since 2005. That doesn't mean that city has done nothing since then. Since then, there were like, I would say, at least three projects that I have seen in the records that have been completed in 2009, 2013, and again, in 2018. There were purely only steel line replacement projects that had been done, but they were like a small project in the range of less than half a million dollar project. To make a big impact, since we have 89 miles of water line, which are aging from 50 years to 100 years, we need to do a big overhaul. So with that in mind, we were planning in 2020, when Bartle did the rate analysis, the plan was to replace a portion of the steel water line. And in that rate study, when we did the engineer's estimate at that time, the cost of the project was $5 million. So it was included in the rate study for the $5 million. In that $5 million, you know, at that time, we were very successful in getting grants. So the goal was to get 2.5 million via grant or loan, and other would be from the city fund. So it was planned, but you know, same project, there are more, we are finding, as we are digging more, we are finding more failure of the pipes. So the project is expanding, like initially, it was maybe a four-mile-long project, but today, it's like six miles. We need to replace six miles, and the cost has definitely doubled since then. So since the project was $5 million at that time, and today's dollar, that cost is 14.5. And we will know when the bids come out. Still, the materials supply shortage, so costs may go up, but the highest estimate at this point is 14.5 million for the whole project.
And the longer we wait, the more that price goes up. So it's now or never, really.
Yeah. And also, maybe not to give you perspective, when we did the estimate for the wastewater project 10 years ago, the cost of the project was $15 million. Today, when we did the project, it's $64 million project, and that's just only Phase 1. So the cost has definitely exponentially increased in the market, so we just had to keep up with those.
So this supply chain has really affected the cost, and I know we're not able to speculate if that's going to change, but, I mean, that's the big cost, right? I mean, with COVID in the supply chain or not? Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it plays a role, definitely. Supply and its shortage of materials, so the cost is up definitely. It does, because after COVID, and this was the cost of $5 million for the project, that was prior to COVID. And after the COVID, when we did the, again, estimate two years ago, when we were trying to get a loan for the project, it was a $9 million project. That was like just two years ago.
So we're only going to see it escalate, and so the sooner we take it by the reins and do something, the better off it will be. And now we know that there are probably going to be charges on tariffs, and so I don't know how that will affect things, it could significantly affect things. Other council comments and questions, please?
Tabitha, could you help me understand, when you were talking about the 6% potential increase and then dividing like 3% to water, 3% to sewer? I guess I didn't really understand what you were saying.
No, and that's a good question. So it would be 6% increase on water. The impact to a customer who's receiving a bill because the wastewater side would not, you know, or may not increase, would be that their overall water wastewater bill would increase approximately 3% because it would be that, it would be spread because there would only be a 3%, there would be a 3% overall increase in their combined bill. So that was what I was saying. So you'd still have, it doesn't change the average 6%. And again, those numbers are not set in stone. It doesn't change the increase on the water side of it. There would just be no increase on the wastewater side, so their total bill, the two combined, would see a 3% increase roughly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just going to say, in the past, my understanding was the more water you use, the more your sewer bill was going to go up.
And to a point, that is true, although we do winter averaging and other things so that it ties it to it. So, but you are, you are correct. But you still wouldn't, when you get charged on that extra sewer, you still wouldn't, the sewer piece of it would not have any increases built in, at least in the short term, is what we're expecting.
And then the rate increase that was, began several years ago, wasn't that phase, hasn't that been phasing in over time? And I know that was, that was not an easy decision in that moment. That was very controversial, and considering the times that we are in right now, I, this is going to be tough. I understand the need. And I do appreciate, Nitra, when you clarified that we've gone from four miles to six miles, that helps in, you know, explain the increase as well as, I think we've all seen the prices are going up, so I get that. But with 89 miles of pipe, I don't think the public hearing this is going to fix six is really going to make, it doesn't make me really feel great, like if we were doing the whole 89, maybe. But it's like, we're doing six, and, you know, so that's kind of what I'm grappling with here. And then the other problem or just concern I have is normally, like, I appreciate that we are in, you know, like, we're not rich by any means, but we're making it where a lot of, you know, municipalities are not. So I appreciate that we are in a good financial position. And so normally, like to authorize borrowing from a fund, $8 million, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't really, I would just say, yeah. But I just have, I have a concern about that right now in this moment. Maybe we have gotten a lot of grant money. I think that, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty as to what type of grant money we will have access to. So we can't, you know, before, there was, there was a system that was set in place that we could pretty much rely on. And so we kind of knew, here's the equation. If we do this, this, we don't have that right now. It's chaos. And I'm just really, I'm just really thinking about committing to taking $8 million that, you know, that we have to put back on our customers. And, you know, I know we're great at getting grants, but they, it might not be us, you know, they might not be there. So that's what I'm struggling with. I don't know how others feel.
Can I add something to that? I know we are very fortunate in getting grants and loan, and we did apply for a loan and grant for this project, and we had this conversation with our granting agency a month ago regarding this project. And the response was, our rates, current rates, do not support the loan that they want to give us. So we need to make some adjustment to get those loans or grants in future. If we don't do the rate study, in some ways, we will not be able to afford the loans that they give at the low interest.
Well, and that makes sense, and I don't, I don't have any argument with a rate study in doing that. I guess the, my only hesitation is right now, and I just, you know, really want to hear from everyone about authorizing that $8 million on all of our regular assumptions because, and I guess I'm curious, too, Tabitha, with, I understand you can't predict the future, especially this one, but, you know, how you feel about, about that.
So this is a tough decision, and it, you know, and looking at, especially understanding that we're going to have, regardless of how you put it, we're going to have big rate increases. I mean, they just are. And like I said, plugging the numbers in and even 6% a year is, is a lot. The challenge is I don't know that we can't not do it. And in the, you know, looking at the wastewater fund and the, where we're at as far as the next phase, we certainly have the ability. It is where the money is there, and we can certainly borrow it, and it does allow us to move forward. And it may be, and it gives us time to really come up with a more comprehensive, longer plan. And it may be, and I'm not, I haven't looked at all the numbers, but it may be that we do take on the bigger, you know, more of the 89 miles or a big chunk of the 89 miles, and we look at longer-term, 30-year financing and see if that helps pay for it. You know, we're, the unknowns are really scary. And whether it's you're trying to look at interest rates, whether you're trying to look at grant revenues, whether you're trying to look at how our economy is going to go, those are all big issues, and this is a big commitment, and we do have to be comfortable with that decision. There are a few alternatives, but they're not any better. I can tell you, we could borrow from the general fund, or we could borrow from a combination, but it's still money out of pocket. It's not, that doesn't make it any easier or any prettier.
Tabitha, what do our rates look like compared to other jurisdictions' rates?
We are, we are comparable. We have not gone, I haven't looked at all of them in detail, but we're, we're not at the low end. I mean, it's, I would love to tell you, you know, that we're real low in this, but it's not the case. I do believe Eureka may be a little bit higher now, but not substantially where we can hang our hat on being. You know, it's a challenge of smaller cities actually typically always have higher rates because the infrastructure is the cost, and you're doing everything. You can't spread the cost amongst as many people. So that, it's always a challenge for utilities in a smaller city or a smaller town.
That's a good question. Thank you. I was wondering, too. My big concern is older adult community on fixed income. I mean, this might not be doable for them. Is there something that we can do if they financially qualify to supplement them? And I know it's like, well, then we have to, I don't know. Can we do that? I'm...
So we, we do have, we have, and we do have, even right now, we do have programs like the TBRA, the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, does have a utility amount. And I, there's potential for that money or other money to be available in the future, but again, we're talking about grants, so I do not want to make any promises that that would be a program that would be available. We can and we will look at potential for that. One of the challenges with looking at, if you subsidize rates on one, even if you can legally do it and subsidize rates with one group, that cost ends up kind of falling on the other. I will say, one of the things that I liked about the folks from Bartle Wells, who we met with this week, actually, was that one of their folks was talking about being very cognizant of the impact to, you know, lower-income families and lower-income communities and really looking at ways to make that work. And so I'm hoping we may be able to get, we didn't go into any conversation about that, that we may be able to get some feedback that might help us figure out plans as to how we might be able to better deal with that.
Can you remind me, did we also borrow money from the wastewater treatment fund for unfunded pension liabilities?
We didn't, we didn't borrow money. So we used, both the water fund and the wastewater fund made contributions last year, but that was for the liability based on the employees that are paid out of those funds. So we did not borrow, but we did make contributions, yes.
On the 49% at 2034, can you, I mean, sorry, it's late. Does that mean that we'll have a 49%? What was the percentage? Well, maybe it wasn't 49.
So the projection where I was looking at the $45 million, was that what we were talking about?
No, we started off with 6% in 2026, and then it goes to 2024. What, I'm assuming that we're going to...
Yeah.
Ease it in there. What would be the final number, percentage?
It would be 6 times 10, so it would be 60%.
So more than even 49%?
Yes.
I missed that calculation. So in 10 years, we'll be paying 60% more on our water bill?
Yes.
And we have to remember...
And I want it, but I do want to keep it in mind that these are plug numbers. They were my giving you estimates, and so that I could show you that we can move forward. It may or may not be where we end up. It may or may not be where we end up, and, and you have not made any decisions on that.
So, just to clarify, so today, we're just directing you to draft what a loan policy would look like. We're not specifically approving it yet. This will come back, right?
No, it, no, the, the, what we're asking, the loan policy will come back before you. And then, you would also have an opportunity to approve the loan. So you could look at those separately, you could look at the same meeting depending on how you feel. But you are not making, you're giving me the direction to bring it back to you for a final decision. And we will, the other thing I will mention is that the, even the rate study will come back to you as a contract, will ask you for your approval.
That was my next question. So we've already begun that, though?
We, we have, we are in negotiations on the contract. So we've talked to them, we've got in a proposal, we're coming to terms, but you have the final say as, as far as approving the contract.
And have we looked into other options?
We, we didn't as far as other firms, mostly because we were trying to move forward quickly. We actually made this decision because we didn't want to spend the time on an RFP because we felt time was of the essence.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking about, you know, in 2020, they knew this, and why didn't we build it in a little bit then, so it wasn't such a big shock?
But we, we built in the $5 million, and even, we built in the $2.5 million, but keep in mind, we have $10.2 million even at the end of this year. We would have been absolutely fine if that was the cost of what, what we had planned for.
Hey, Tabitha, what are we going to have mid-year budget review? Is that coming up?
It, it, it will come to you on March 5th is where we're planning.
Okay. I know that you're getting close to your time. Should we take public comments, so you can at least hear that before?
Well, one of the things I just wanted to mention, that this is never easy. It's very difficult, and raising rates has always been an issue for as long as I know, and it really bothers people. But, and I can understand it, and we have, I think maybe things will be somewhat different in the future if we have more housing, we have more people to spread it out to. And I'm hoping that that'll happen with the Gateway Plan and other planning, that we will have more people in our communities to help offset some of this. And the other thing is that we no longer have any wooden pipes for water, I'm assuming, because there was a time when the city would go in because they had a leak, and they would dig it up, and they had a pipe that looked like a barrel, was redwood, it would have a band around it. And when it was swollen, when there was water, and it would be swollen, and it wouldn't leak. But if it wasn't, then it had, it would leak. So I think the city has gotten rid of all those. If you ever want to see one, there's one down at, friends at the Marsh, there, you can go look at it. And there's one up at the Phillips House Museum. And you can see what our water system, how it was when it was originally built, and how we've improved on it over the years.
There may be still be some underground, because it's...
You might still find one somewhere?
Well, there are 89 miles, we have not dug all. And, yeah, so there may be some we might find down the road when we are maybe doing this project or future projects.
But it, this is a really hard subject, but we have to provide water. And if we think about it, and we think about the amount of money it costs us each time we have a crew go out and have to dig a hole and fix something, it's really costing us on this end, too. And so it affects our overall budget, and I'm just thinking that we, we don't have many choices when people want water, and we don't want to have all these leaks, and we need to save water, and people would say to us, well, you lose all that water, and then what about a fire? You know, and we say, oh, well, you know. So it's not easy. So just we, with the staff recommendation here, do we have anyone on the council that would be willing to move forward on directing staff?
I'd like to hear public comment before we...
Alrighty, so, if you would like to comment on this item, please step forward. Okay, ready?
Gregory Daggett. I've had quite a few conversations with our past city manager on this subject, so let's get, make this as simple as possible. So for years, we've been raising our rates on water and our sewage, and we've been telling the public that that money is going to go to projects like this to repair the pipes that are deteriorating. And as Meredith mentioned, you took $5 million from this fund recently and used that for your pension, which I, 2.5 from each of them, if I'm accurate on that. And so, I mean, has that ever even been done in the history of the, of the city, where we've taken money from, that we tell the public, you know, that we're collecting to do these jobs, and then it's used for a pension? So that's a point I would be, I would make, and it, it's kind of like creative financing. So, I mean, obviously, the city should have, years and years ago, at a much lower price, done this project, because this is a, a big number, and your, your taxpayers are, are hurting at this time. I mean, part of the reason, the elections in the federal ended up the way that they are, if you look at all the data, is because people are just, you know, everything's going up, whether it's food and all these, these costs. So it's part of, you know, in the past, from my opinion, of city managers that I don't think came from a financial background. You realize that the majority of city managers these days need to have a master's degree in finance? So maybe if we had people in the past that, you know, looked at these things and made decisions, we wouldn't be in the situation now, which is a very difficult situation to be in, because we're kind of screwed. It's like the amount that has to be paid, and the, just the financial condition of people that are, I mean, they don't, they don't understand. I mean, when I ran for office, there wasn't one single person that knew that money came out of, out of this fund, that they've been paying for their water that went into the pension. Nobody knew that, and they were kind of shocked by that. I'd also mention, you know, we put $64 million into the wastewater treatment plant that was, was, you know, paid by this, a lot of by the state. And why is it that, like, right before New Year's Day, that we had a huge, all, all this wastewater was being dumped into the Bay raw sewage, because we had six or seven hours of, you know, just a big mess? And it was reported to the Regional Water Quality Board, and we sank all this money into it, but we're still having problems that we're polluting the bay with raw sewage. So it would be nice if we had answers to these questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak?
Hi, Walt Geist. Longtime resident, first-time speaker. I actually wanted to talk to you a little bit about modeling. 6% compounded over 10 years is not 60%, it's 100%. So just for the record, that's actually doubling the rate over 10 years. Yeah. But it is. So I just want to be clear.
Well, you have a disagreement, but...
Oh, no, 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 it's math. But I mean, if it's less than 6%, you might get to 60%. But 6% raised, 6% every year for 10 years, compounded. In your modeling, I'm very interested to know, Alex brought up a very good point about the base assumption on our population. I know Humboldt's building a lot of buildings. I'm not sure exactly what the demographics look like going into the future, but the assumption that that line would be falling persistently, I'm, I just, I would question that, whether there's a fallacy there. One of the other things that I heard that doesn't ring, we lost $200,000 in leaking water because we were refunding people's bills, right? We would have $200,000 in revenue? Yes. But if their water didn't leak, they wouldn't have used it. You would never bill them that $200,000? That's a fallacy. That, you would, they, they would never have used it. It just leaked, so we lost it. We don't pay on volume, we pay for the treatment. So to the extent that our marginal cost of losing water is the, is the cost of transport and the cost of treatment, how much our marginal cost is on every lost gallon, that cost-benefit analysis may not come anywhere close to the amount of money you're talking about spending. So while it may be abhorrent to waste all this water, the actual cost of wasting that water might not be anywhere near what you're talking about spending, because you're not paying for the volume of water you're using or losing. Also, I would question the engineer, whether there are other alternatives for a full-on replacement. There's pipeliners, there's a lot of other intermediary, intermediary steps that may or may not serve a very, very long-term horizon. But I would encourage you to look up and out to see if there are other alternatives. So as someone who models professionally, just my points.
Thank you. So is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there's not.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I live in Arcata. I am part of a tenant-based rental assistance. I came here from Santa Barbara, which is all about conserving water, the need because of their reality. And I just appreciate this discussion and the wise questions that the council is asking, and the presentation from you and the member of the public. I, I think it would be really great if there could be some sort of educational system in place so that people, besides just getting their water bill and seeing it go up, or trying to figure out what's going on, how we can tell people that we are a growing community with old infrastructure, and if we're going to keep maintaining this project, you know, underground, and redoing the pipes to make them stronger and stop the leakage and stuff, that, that people have this kind of education about it, as opposed to just passively paying a bill or objecting to a bill. You know, maybe we need to really do some education to the citizenry about what is taking place, other than just at these meetings, which very few people attend. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
So, I do appreciate, Tabitha, because your presentations are always so transparent and concise, and, you know, to Greg's point, you know, you do like your research and have... But I'm just wondering if, I know there's some good points that were raised in public comment, if there's any, do you want to make any comment on those, both you and Netra?
Well, first, I want to make sure there's no one else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Okay.
And I know there's PVC pipe and galvanized pipe and steel, you're talking steel water lines, I guess you're talking about buying steel pipe. And, uh, so I don't know how much that costs, or you're talking about the street or the houses, but I guess that's worth fixing if the earthquakes are messing up the pipes or, I don't know. And, and that's all I know about that.
Thank you very much. Tabitha, before you jump in, I, I'm sure that you will, but I just want to make sure, because I, I was going to ask you about, if you could please elaborate on the pension, because the way it was described, anybody would be worked up about. So if you could just, again, explain that process, and, because there's very, large restrictions on what you can do with money that's taken for water. So, and I know we are not doing anything that we are not supposed to be doing, so if you could explain that again, I would appreciate that, so the general public understands.
So we, we did make contributions between water and wastewater. It was a total of $2.5 million, and I believe it was a million from water and $1.5 million from wastewater. And there were two, two things we did that with that money. One was, we put it in a 115 trust, so that it will be used for pensions going forward, and that has flexibility, that we could use it any year that we might run into a budget issue that we need to pay it off. And that money is sitting in both of those funds on their balance sheet. It earns interest, and it is available. We also made a one-time payment with the remaining amount of that money, which, again, I think it was, I'd have to look at the dollars, but it was a total of $5 million, but it was only $2.5 from these two funds towards, towards our unpaid pension liability. And the reason that we took it out of water and wastewater is that we have a number of city employees who are billed from and employed by those funds. And it's, it's a combination, some, some folks are billed 100%, some are billed in percentages, but that it does support prior employees and current employees. And so they will pay those charges regardless. And what we were trying to do is save that interest rate of, it's now 6.8%. The CalPERS charges us on our unfunded liability. So over time, because the water and the wastewater fund were able to make bigger contributions, their pension costs will be less as, as far as, as a total percentage of the dollars. So it should save money over the long run. And we've even talked about trying to pay down in total, at least the wastewater fund, in order to cut the cost and to actually save money on rates going forward on the employee cost involved in both of those funds. Because we do have employees that work for those funds, and they do the, pay the wages, and they do pay the benefits, and they do pay all of the cost to employ those employees to do that work. And that is fair, and, and, you know, a legitimate cost of the fund.
Right. So that last part is what I really wanted people to understand, is that running a city isn't like running a business. I receive money, I pay my employees. We receive money in lots of ways, and we pay our employees, and we build the departments that they work for, and they're paid by a variety of means of funding. So when, so it's very complicated. And so if you, if it just gets simplified down to say, you're paying pensions out of water fund, that does not sound good. But when people understand that if you work at the, if you work in water here, that's where your wages and benefits come from, that fund, so your pension also comes from that. So I think it's just important to clarify for the public, this is, this is, this is normal, and there was no misappropriation. So are there other comments from the council?
I just had a couple of questions you wanted me to, to weigh in on. And I would certainly tell him that the modeling that I did was not in-depth. It is, it's part of the reason we're looking at a rate study company that does this. We did not do an, you know, we, we had half a percent growth built in, whether or not that's an appropriate number, it's conservative. Way in other growth, that we might have a higher growth rate in our customer base. One of the biggest reasons that the revenue falls off like that is really that loss of the, it's, it's twofold. And I want to make sure I, and I think it was in the model, but in the pages, it's because we are looking at a small decrease in the rate revenue, but that's probably the least of it. It's that you're going to, as you reduce those cash balances, you're not going to have your investment income. And it actually will become potentially negative because you're going to be paying other funds. So that's probably the piece that sort of summarized and that wasn't clear. I will be completely honest, the, the interest rate, I did an average. I did not calculate how much the cumulative total was, so it's an average of 6% a year. So it's, it wouldn't be cumulative of 6% each year. It was plugged in numbers, and I did not get that number. So your, your total interest or your total rate increase over the 10 years is an average of 6%, but the cumulative total, I don't have an exact number for you.
And so when this comes back to us...
And it wasn't 6% every year, it was different amounts, so it's not an exact amount.
And when this comes back to us, if it does, it'll be more, less, be more specific?
Of course. And, and it's, keep in mind that we're, I probably am not going to bring models like this back for you. We'll do it through the weight study. So it'll be a comprehensive, professional folks and other folks that are looking at it. This was a matter of trying to put the numbers up. But I, you know, I, I, I take, you know, the, the input.
Yes, so I will respond to that question on different methods of replacing the water line. And definitely, we are trying to reduce the cost of the project as much as possible. There are different ways to replace the water line. Lining is one of them, but most of our pipes are 4-inch. Lining them would make them smaller. So we want to have a, at least 6-inch minimum water line for the fire suppression, so that's the reason we are not doing lining. And then, we are also trying to purchase the materials so that we don't get a markup from the contractor. So we are, in advance, we are trying to purchase materials so we don't get the markup from the contractor. So, so those are the things we are doing.
Well, thank you.
And on top of that, not only dig and replace, we are also doing burst-in-place as one of the options, which you don't have to dig, you just burst the pipe in place and replaces the pipe. So that's one of the method, and that's in our bid documents as one of the options.
Thank you. Okay, so it comes back to the council to recommend something to staff? Are you willing to do that this evening, or to direct staff?
So when this comes back, will the rate study be, how close will we be to having, no? no?
No, no. The rate study is probably, if, the contract will probably come back to you on the 19th or the 5th, depending on timing. But you probably have months before you're going to see the results of the rate study.
And then you were saying that a rate increase wouldn't start till '26? Is that?
It would be, so it would still have to go through the 218 notice and rate increase process. So there is, you know, a public piece of it where everybody gets to weigh in. We are projecting that it would probably be January 1st of 2026, but that's also a decision that would be made through the process and also based on what your input is. The one thing, you know, that I will say and that the gentleman alluded to, your rate increases at the beginning of the process, because they're cumulative, have more impact than, you know, starting low and ending up high. So that's something that would be considered and it's just part of the strategy that you would look at.
So I am, you know, interested to see what this looks like when the policy comes back and getting some more information. So I will go ahead and move to make the staff recommendation to draft an interfund loan policy and a resolution providing terms for an 8.5 million loan from the city's wastewater fund to the city's water fund council for possible future council action.
Thank you. Is there a second on that direction?
Yes, I'll second that. I think we can't lose with more information. It seems that's definitely what we need, so yes.
Thank you. So I'll ask all those in favor by signifying an aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tabitha.
So now we'll move on to oral and written communications. The city council values your comments and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. You're speedy. The speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items. So go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, in today's paper, in the city of Arcata, three individuals lost their lives in a fire. The fire was assisted, I believe, in Blue Lake, Humboldt Bay, and Eureka, and an also a cow fire to put it out in a half an hour. I'd also point out, just about two weeks ago, I think it was, it was January 14th, Sora Place caught on fire. And basically, I saw the fire trucks going down, it was down the street and it was like, pretty intense. And fortunately, the sprinklers went off an entire floor and put the fire out. So, but the other lesson to learn from the standpoint, they put a call out to Blue Lake, unavailable, McKinleyville, unavailable, Fortuna, with a ladder truck, unavailable, and then Eureka, Humboldt Bay, unavailable. So if that had got broken out and was a little worse than that, basically, there wouldn't have been any help, no ladder trucks available. So I bring this up from the standpoint, we had some discussions in the past about this, but not really. We didn't, the city council never invited the fire district even to bring their presentation here. But this scenario wasn't even brought up from the standpoint that clearly, all these other cities that were available supposedly to, you know, help us in a mid-rise fire, they weren't even available because they were out dealing with emergencies or other fires. So, I mean, it's pretty shocking. And I'd also point out that in the last two weeks, the Standard put out an article with the concerns from the fire district with Cal Poly, with that being built and ready to go this summer and, you know, just a disaster from the standpoint, they have no ability to fight a fire in that building. It's just, maybe if something happens, the smoke sprinklers will go off. But as pointed out in Sora Place, it wasn't the issue, it was the flames, it was the smoke. The smoke is what kills people in these buildings and we are just totally unprepared at all. It's just, I mean, it's kind of like, I bring this back to your decision back in August that was so premature from the standpoint of not even waiting for your study to come out. But, I mean, this is, this is something that's going to have to go to the state soon because it's the reality. And for you to follow in their footsteps was a big mistake. You should have just waited to see how this was going to work out with Cal Poly instead of just approving for seven stories because you're really using the public as a guinea pig, in my opinion, and the students are, too. So.
Thank you. Except, so I read the same article you did and I saw those other fire departments, they were backup in case they were needed within the city of Arcata. They weren't asked to actually fight the fire if they were. But we have a report and I'm waiting for that to come to the city council, the draft report on, from the fire, fire district and the Cal Poly, Arcata, and the fire district, all paid for it. And I see that the draft is out. I read that in the paper. So I'm sorry to delay, but would you like to come forward and speak, please? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tricia Murphy and I'm here to voice my support for Sister City with Palestine in Gaza. I would like to be part of doing everything we can as a city, no matter how small, to try to make amends and restitution that we can never make to the Palestinians for the fact that we aided and abetted Israel in a bombing campaign, a killing campaign that's gone on for 15 months and really for 80 years. There are a lot of lies told about October 7th and I would really urge people to read the Hararat Israeli newspaper. There's been a gag order lifted, there's been an investigation into what actually happened on the 7th. What we do know is pilots that were flying Apache helicopters have come forward and said that the Hannibal Directive was enacted that day. The Hannibal Directive was something they came up with when an Israeli person was taken hostage into Gaza some years ago. And they had to give up several Palestinian detainees in order to get that person back. And at that point, they decided that the Hannibal Directive would be used going forward to prevent any Israelis from going into Gaza, dead or alive. The pilots said that they were full of munitions, there was at least a dozen. They came in, the burned-out cars, there were roughly 1,000 of them, were shot down with missiles from Apache helicopters. There was nothing that Hamas or the Palestinians fighters brought over the border that could have done that kind of damage. That's a well-established fact. I would urge people to listen to The Gray Zone, Max Blumenthal, who has, he's a Washington correspondent reporter. He is, he's Jewish. His partner, Aaron Mate, is from Canada, he's also Jewish. Aaron Mate's father, Gabor Mate is a trauma specialist and a survivor of the Holocaust. These guys are doing excellent reporting and they've actually held even the New York Times' feet to the fire. The accusations of mass rape have been debunked. You can read about that. You can read in the New York Times that those rapes did not happen. There's not a shred of evidence. They just, an investigative prosecutor from Israel just had to admit there was absolutely no evidence of that, no evidence of any.
Thank you so much.
Decapitated babies.
Thank you.
I support Sister City with Palestine.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment? Do we have anyone? Oh, all right, Joanne.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary and I like to sometimes remind people of personal history and local history. And three years ago today, I was viciously attacked by a pack of dogs and was bitten severely in my legs and my elbow. I recall that incident as being very traumatic to me, but it was nothing compared to the history that happens tomorrow of 140 years since the Chinese expulsion in Eureka, where a group of people were forcibly removed from our nearby town because of who they were and where they came from. And for us in 2025, as the city of Arcata, to oppose the viciousness and the hostility and the hate that historically has come out of this community against people who are different, against the other, and the dehumanization of people in our community and elsewhere. And I have requested and never gotten a decent response about my request that we become a peaceful, nonviolent, compassionate place, declare us as such by joining these international groups that many other municipalities belong to, the International Cities of Peace out of Dayton, Ohio, the Nonviolent City Project, and the Charter for Compassion. I see no reason why we can't join so many other cities like us in declaring our unity on being a peaceful, nonviolent, and compassionate place. There's a lot of division going around and there's a lot of fear. And I've talked about this before. We cannot lead by fear. We must be brave and courageous. If you can't be brave and courageous right now, please, don't stay in leadership. Be brave and courageous. We all belong to each other. And peace and nonviolence, compassion, compassion. I walk around with this peace and love sign, flag, because I want to remind myself, but I want to remind the community that that's what it comes down to. Love is the answer. My friend Greg Boyle wrote this book, Cherished Belonging, The Healing Power of Love in a Divided Time. Let us lead with love. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Do we have anyone on, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we don't have anyone on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. So I would like to confirm a study session with the committees and commissioners, chair people, and that will be on February 12th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. It'll be held in the council chambers. We have no closed sessions tonight, we have no closed session reports, and we're now adjourned. So thank you.